Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the agenda of the regular board meeting, President and Board of Trustees, Village of Burnham. Today is November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. At this time, Clerk would call the role, please.
Trustee Cap?
I'm here.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here. Okay, we have a prompt, so we stand for President Lee, just to be lead of the House of Representatives. President Lee, today, under the United States Constitution, and between the public and which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I made any changes or corrections of the minutes for the board meeting that was held on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. So, any changes to be made to the minutes, any corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
That's a motion to approve by trustee Cap to approve the minutes from November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Could we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson, Clerk take the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed, minutes approved. Now, before we open the session to the public, if you have anything to state to the board, if you will stand up and give us your name and your reason for addressing the board, and please limit your comments to three minutes, to three minutes, please. At this time, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public. I'll make a motion to open the meeting to the public. That's a motion to approve by trustee Claybrook, could we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Cap, Clerk take the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. All right, motion passed, the meeting is now open to the public. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? I will ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion to close the meeting, please.
There's a motion to approve to close the meeting to the public, could we have a second?
Second.
Second? The motion was made by trustee Garcia, and the second by trustee Richardson, will Clerk take the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. All right, motion passed, the session is now closed publicly, for the public. Can the mayor's report, I just want to say that we had some people been calling in and had some issues about parking on the street, we're working on a capital project, placing some curbs in our sidewalk, which we've mentioned at several meetings before, and this project is moving readily along, and hopefully it'll be done within two weeks or less, hopefully. And so, we apologize in advance for and afterward for any inconvenience that this may have caused. So, we're working and improving things in the village and delivering our services to the taxpayers, and that is our duty and our job to do that, and we are committed as doing so. Clerk Chavez?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a question.
Okay, Clerk Chavez. Yes, the clerk reminded me, thank you clerk, the next meeting, it will be back at the village hall, and we apologize, well, I apologize, but I did start it the last time, I said it would be at the village hall, but since we have a special occasion tonight, we wanted some extra space to make sure we can maintain our social distancing, so that's why we brought it back here, but on December the fourteenth, we will be back at the village hall. You thank you clerk for that reminder.
Oh, let me say something, I forgot, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. The village hall has a new phone system, so please bear with us with the new system that we have, so if you need to contact the clerk's office in order to make any utility payment, please hit the option one for clerk's office, and that's all I have.
Thank you clerk for that information. Public education, health, safety, and welfare, trustee Greer?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a letter from the Burnham Fire Department to Mayor Polk, Board of Trustees, and Village Clerk Chavez, and it's from the chief, dated November third, two thousand and twenty-one. Dear Mayor Polk, Clerk Chavez, and Board of Trustees, the fire department can't thank you enough for all of your support. During this pandemic, it has been tough on all of us. The fire department needed all the help it could get to succeed through these hard times. You were there each step of the way to give us what we needed to make a positive impact on not only the citizens, but members of the fire department. All the improvement to the firehouse equipment, and here, we'll go a long way to making each firefighter safer, healthier, and a better public servant to each citizen of Burnham. We will continue to strive to make you and the village proud of our fire department each and every day. Please never hesitate to let us know if you or anyone need a helping hand, as we will do anything we can to be there when needed respectfully, John F. Katsuski, Fire Chief. And we should never forget our fire department and our police department, they put their lives on the front line for us. The fire department will go into a burning building for us, and the police department will protect those who can't protect themselves, so they give so much for us. So, we thank you for all the service that you do, the fire department and the police department. I'd like to thank Gien Care was here on Saturday, and it was very, very interesting, there were questions that was asked, as you know, Gien Care is a senior medical center, and they're located in Dalton, so they were out, and there were many questions, people asked questions, our concerns that they had, and our special guest was forty-plus, Double Dutch Club. The ladies were awesome, they were awesome, you would not believe, you had ladies eighty years old, seventy years old, jumping rope, and so it was exciting, they were good, and hopefully, we're gonna have Double Dutch Club at our own center here soon. The two thousand and twenty-one Illinois rental payment program, if your landlord has not started an application, you may still apply for rental assistance. Applicants are eligible for up to fifteen months of assistance. Applications will be accepted from Monday, December the sixth, through eleven fifty-nine on Sunday, January the sixth. If you are tenant or landlord, and have applied already for rental assistance during the May to July of two thousand and twenty-one application period, you can check on the status of your application, you can go online, or you can call eight six six four five four three five seven one. Just a reminder that Thornton Township operates on a curb-to-curb service within the township. Service is available from seven a.m. to six fifteen p.m., if anyone is in need of service. Metro train station, for those who take the metro train station on one hundred and forty-seven Street and Sibley in Harvey, they will be doing an upgrade, thirteen million dollars, so that should be starting soon, and that's a good thing, because if you ever know, if you ever been there to ride that, that particular station, or if you ever had to wait on someone at that particular station, it's very, very dark, sort of dangerous, so I think we all will welcome this thirteen million dollar upgrade. Keep an eye on your shrubs, your grass, your flowers, that's planted alongside your house, near the foundation, always making sure that any ground covering, thick or low, lines for foliage, stay well maintained, otherwise, mice may be able to make their way into your home, thanks to the hiding places in your garden, so you should keep that low and well maintained, none of us want any visitors in our home.
No.
Common plants that attract the rats and the mice includes ivy, cypress, and palm trees, and the juniper bushes, these plants offer shelter and food for the mice, and I did, as I reminded you before, in this area, there will be an additional area code coming soon. And last but not least, Thanksgiving is a person, the perfect occasion to let your heart speak for all the things you are grateful for, and we need to count our blessings, one by one, on this Thanksgiving day, because we truly have lots to be thankful for, for our families, for our health, for a wonderful community that is moving forward each and every day, so Thanksgiving is the perfect time to let your heart speak. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you trustee Greer, for your report and that information, clever works in building. And trustee Claybrook, this is a landscaper that's here in the village of Burnham, so it'll be a little bit higher than I expected for it to be, but they did change out all the infrastructure around State Street and the mall area, and so it's twelve-sixth, so I'm gonna make sure that all of this is done properly, a couple other things that we done, I think he wants an extra four hundred, but I'm gonna make sure we get our money, work out of it, and of course, everything have gone up, so we expect for the town to look a lot better in the spring, and not that it look bad now, so we just want to keep our community up, and keep your property values up in this town, and certainly, certainly keep the crime down, and studies have shown that towns that are, that are up kept, tend to have less criminal activity in them, because it mean that people really care about that area, and care about that town, so proceed trustee Claybrook. Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I don't have any question, I'm sorry, I don't have any question from the board. Okay, proceed trustee Claybrook.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve the submitted invoice by Munio's Landscaping of twelve thousand six hundred dollars for the following work, retaining walls, replace landscape bricks, replace landscape materials, all the way, the old dirt and materials, replace the tree, and remove the stump along State Street and the mall area.
And we'll throw in some extras.
I make a motion to approve the submitted invoice by Munio's Landscaping of twelve thousand six hundred dollars for the following work, retaining walls, replace landscape bricks, replace landscape materials, all the way, the old dirt, materials, replace the tree, and remove the stump along State Streets and Mall Area.
And they also put in new dirt too, we forgot to put in it, so you made the motion, so trustee Claybrook have the motion to approve, I mean, on the floor to approve this landscaping. The space, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Richardson, Clerk take the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. All right, motion, thank you.
Yes, and also, past, past, this week, actually, the leaf collector has been out collecting leaves, so it's still going on, it's, the leaves are, for some reason, falling late this season, but still have time to rake your leaves to the parkway, and we'll get out there periodically.
What day, how many days?
It's not, it's not set days, they're out yesterday and today, and they'll be out tomorrow also.
Oh, because we had, out there was someone who was raking, and I stopped and talked, and they could move to the parkway, but she said, what day is due?
Yeah, if she, if she just rakes up to the parkway, we'll get to it.
And trustee Claybrook, would you also announce that Homewood, last day for picking up leaves and vegetation, it's based Monday to twenty-nine?
Yeah, Homewood disposal, last day of picking up vegetation is November twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty.
And the payroll?
Yeah. And also, last meeting, last meeting, we approved, the board approved, uh, wheel loader in amount of hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, which included the trade, trading amount of sixteen thousand for the whole, it was nineteen, nineteen ninety-seven overall, we paid it off, and now, we saved interest, we saved over twelve thousand dollars in interest over the past, the next five years, so we won't have to worry about any interest on that. And also, shout out to trustee Cap, I was making rounds last week, and I saw trustee Cap trimming the Burnham Street, she, uh, grabbed, she got interest too.
Looks much better, I finished yesterday, all the way up to the bridge, haven't got a bad spot on State Street, I'm trying to get it on that.
Started twenty-seven, where it is.
Started twenty-seven hundred, go to twenty-seven ninety.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you trustee Claybrook for your report and that information, Order of Revolution and Planning, trustee Garcia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to figure out, approve the submitted new business license from Munro Curry Williams, DVA, MRCW, Career Institute.
Now, this issue, uh, is before the board, and I don't know if Ms. Williams would have anything to bring to the table at this time, we have been trying to work with Ms. Williams, and we will continue to try to work with her, but I think she did make some restitutions today, and so, but we will leave it up to the board as to how we should proceed with this, and, you know, we have democratic process, so, did you have anything alternative?
No, I don't know the status, since this morning, if she made any payments, or entered into an agreement with village clerk about the proposal that was made to her last week, I hope you, the village clerk was diligently negotiating with her back and forth, I don't know the status of this, I'm just speaking with you now.
Okay, well, the position of the village is, is that we gonna, our position is that we're gonna take her word, I mean, for it, and that she's gonna live up to the agreement as noted, would that be correct, Ms. Williams?
I actually did submit in writing the agreement and make the thing.
Okay, so, just make the motion, so we just make the motion to, to approve the license.
Just reduce it to writing?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Right, okay.
It, it, it was in writing.
Thank you.
Motion to approve this living business license from Munro Curry Williams, DVA, MRCW, Career Institute.
Our second motion, so trustee Garcia has made a motion to approve Ms. Williams' license, trustee Cap, the second motion, I will ask the clerk to take the role in all that motion.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
No.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. All right, motion passed, thank you, do you have anything?
No.
Not yet, okay. We finance trustee Cap?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you trustee Cap. Public Utilities, trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Shrine Circus is taking place over at the Hammond Civic Center, and on Soul Avenue, and we have ticket, adult tickets are twenty dollars, you buy a ticket, then you get free tickets for your kid, so if anyone is interested, you can see the clerk tomorrow, or any, oh, tomorrow, is, I know, oh, tomorrow, yes. Oh, but I guess if you don't have these tickets, you may still be able to purchase them at the Hammond Civic Center, and I'd just like, wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, trustee Richardson, I want to skip down to a new business, I want, I want to ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Jeffrey D. Hodges, and put it under Public Utilities, and then we'll go back to the regular order of business, so, could I have a motion to take item one from New Business, and put it under Public Utilities, so I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to adjust its schedule.
Another motion by trustee Cap to move item one from under New Business, to be a form of Jeffrey D. Hodges, trustee for the village of Burnham, and could we have a second, please?
A second?
A second, so will the clerk take the role?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Thank you very much. Judge?
Do you want me to first, or no?
No.
We don't want to do this.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 go ahead.
So, I have a letter from Christopher Hodges, that he sent to Mayor Polk, and it says, "Mayor Polk and the village of Burnham trustees, please accept this letter as formal notification of my resignation, although I have tremendously enjoyed my time as village trustee, I have decided to accept a new position in the state of Texas as a worship pastor. I couldn't have advanced to such heights without your wisdom and guidance. Thank you for your understanding in this difficult decision. I have grown to love the citizens and officials of Burnham, which makes this transition much harder. Please know I am only a phone call away. With many blessings, Christopher Hodges."
Thank you very much, so, as a result of trustee Hodges resigning, that created an opening on the board, and by state statute and state law, I have the authority with the consent of this present board to make that appointment, and Mr. Jeffrey Hodges has been very instrumental here in the village of Burnham, you know, helping us to organize and put things together, and there were, a couple other people said they had some interest in the position, but they never given me anything in writing, and so he was the only person that did submit, so we certainly appreciate, um, his interest, and, and so, if he get involved with me, then he might regret it, so come on up.
I have to make a motion to accept that point.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Has there been a motion to accept and place a file, trustee Hodges, Chris Hodges, resignation, and then a declaration of vacancy?
Um, no.
Carmella read it, right, is it covered?
As I think, I think you should have a motion first to accept the vacancy, or the resignation, then second, to declare a vacancy, and then the third, the appointment of the new trustee.
So, we have legal counsel on the phone, and that's why we have good advisors, gonna keep us straight in the right order, so I will make a motion to the board to accept the resignation of Christopher Hodges, and that creates a vacancy on the village board, so could we have a motion to accept that?
I make a motion to accept Christopher Hodges' resignation.
And I'll second it.
In a second, so that creates a vacancy, so will the clerk take the role, please?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. And motion passed, so that a vacancy is validated, and I guess you can come up now?
So, we'll come up with an appointment.
We'll, somebody else.
Make the motion to appoint.
I thought we did that, okay.
I'm reading that.
I, where is it at?
Under.
Yeah, remember, we moved it, right? Okay, we're right.
Make a motion to, um, the village president's appointment of Jeffrey D. Hodges of village of Burnham Board of Trustees.
And then I'll second it.
Clerk take the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we change the order sometimes, it creates a little difference, so you can come on up. Judge?
Mayor and trustees, the village of Burnham, which of you women and men in attendance, good evening, my name is Judge Stanley L. Hill, I am an associate judge in the Circuit Court of Cook County, it's my pleasure to be with you once again for the swearing-in ceremony of a newly appointed trustee for the village of Burnham, Illinois. The village of Burnham incorporated a hundred and fourteen years ago on February the eighth, nineteen oh seven, and named after Telford Burnham, who drew the village's first class survey, and not as widely assumed, after the city planner, or the Chicago city planner, Daniel Burnham, some folks thought it was Daniel Burnham, that this town was named after, it was actually Telford Burnham, he was the person who actually drew the village's first class of survey back in nineteen oh seven. Of course, I'd like to use some of Daniel Burnham's words, though, even though Daniel Burnham is not the person this town is named after, with your permission, mayor and trustees and residents of the village, I would like to borrow the words of Daniel Burnham, to suggest inspiration for you, Mr. Hodges, to carry out your newly appointed duties. Daniel Burnham said, "Make no little pla, make no little plans, make no little plans, they have no magic to stir your blood, and probably themselves will not be realized. Make big plans, aim high, and hope and work, remembering that a noble logical diagram once recorded will never die, but long after we are gone, we will be, it will be a living thing asserting itself with ever-growing insistancy. Remember that our sons and daughters and grandchildren are going to do things that would stagger us, let your watchword be order and your beacon beauty, think big. What we have, we must make, what we cherish, we must achieve, what we wish to keep, we must defend. Now, Mr. Hodges, you have been appointed to serve this community, your appointment is cause for deep satisfaction, because the office to which you have been appointed is one of distinction, the responsibility cannot be overstated, in the last analysis, you make or break the village's efficiency, you must make a determined effort to retain a reputation for fair dealing, consider each issue on its merits, be willing to accept the logical conclusion flowing from the facts, even if it involves some concessions on your part, keep an open mind, and listen to both sides, very difficult things can be accomplished by working together, talking together, and compromising, you are well-equipped for the office you are about to assume, I have no doubt that you are possessed of fine attributes of mind and heart, and that you will be a credit to the village of Burnham, and the people of this fine village whom you represent. Make no little plans, think big. To me has been assigned the pleasant task of administering to you the oath of office, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, do you swear or affirm? You might swearing?
I don't think so.
Does that matter? Then state after me, sir, I, Jeffrey David Hodges, having been appointed trustee, in the village of Burnham, in the county of Cook, in the state of Illinois, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of, the office of trustee, to which I have been appointed, and will perform all the duties pertaining to that office, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I congratulate you, and my best wishes to you.
Congratulations, all right. And I would like to give you this badge, I mean, now that you an official of the village of Burnham, I'm giving you this badge, and you carry out your duties throughout the process, and that won't get you out of trouble, could get in trouble with the police, but you are an official in the village of Burnham, and this has the state seal on it, so I present this to you tonight, and we'll get you an ID to go with it. Also, and also, and I can pin this flag on you, I mean, protocol that when you go to a place like that, if you have a American flag on you, which is kind of traditional, keep that, and the last thing, I would like to give you your first assignment, then you can come and take your field about trustee Claybrook.
Wait, hold on, I have to sign that oath.
You gotta sign this first, yeah.
Sign the oath right here, and I'll attest to it.
Okay, what you've done is, that's your official oath, that I'm just, that you will support the Constitution, saying like it, but if that's the case, sign the oath. Thank you clerk. And I'm gonna sign it off, please. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thirty six, thirty seven. Y'all, what you got? I hope we better.
Trustee, trustee? Oh, you have a, you're gonna, oh, you wanna shake hands? There you go. Yeah.
Yeah. This is what you will give your report.
Um, uh.
And by the way, you member of the Parks and Recreation Committee, that's your committee.
Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you, it's, uh, our honor, uh, this is definitely an honor. I'm gonna, uh, thank everyone here. I'm excited to help move Burnham forward. A little anxious, a little nervous.
Yeah, that's, uh.
This is something I do not take for granted, I do not take this lightly. And, um, I'm here for this town, I love this town, I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you.
Um, according to, uh, what I have in front of me, we have the Boy Scouts racing, racing to scouting pathway, the Venture Council, which is, we have a meeting Saturday at ten A.M. at New Life Celebration Church, um, hundred and forty second and Dalton Avenue. One nation, uh, talk to Frank Brown, uh, grades K five, seven oh eight, seven six nine, uh, one four five seven, or Joe Miller. Um, this is for grades six plus, so it's for, for grades, kindergarten grade, you're gonna call seven oh eight, seven six nine, one four five seven, or for, you're gonna call Joe Miller for grades six, um, and up, from three one two, four nine eight, nine zero five one. And it's supported by Alpha Phi Alpha Term Incorporated. Um, how you met?
You say Alpha Phi Alpha?
Yep, Alpha Phi Alpha.
Eight five.
We have the county, uh, Royal Park Districts having a parade this month for twenty twenty one at ten A.M. Uh, the Woody Park Parade is lined up at Memorial on Whitworth. Uh, Burnham will be sending a couple of Beatles to parade, you're gonna be a part of that parade, that'll be December fourth. And twenty twenty, twenty twenty one at ten o'clock A.M. And that is my, my.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
What type of parade you want to enter?
Uh, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a county park district and Memorial.
A Christmas parade.
A Christmas parade, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, with that being said, so, again, thank you, congratulations, congratulations, now to the, to the board, um. So, we will, um, you know, we're gonna be going into executive session for a few minutes, uh, I'm gonna make a motion, and we go back to the regular order of business, and then we'll do that last, so. Regular order of business, and then it'll be presentation of petitions.
Make a motion to go back to regular order of business?
On the most normal floor, by Trustee Garcia, to go back to the regular order of business. Could we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Trustee Clever, will the clerk take the role?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and at this time, um, um, there are some people, um, well, especially young people, I don't know how many young people that don't do it and volunteer, but there aren't too many, um, grown people that I'm aware of that actually, I mean, volunteer, volunteer. Now, of course, I'm not speaking about us, because we volunteer all the time, but we make small salaries, but I'm talking in general. But I would like for Tristan Jackson to come up, and I would like.
So, uh, Tristan, I think that you've been a tremendous asset of Burnham, even though you moved out of Burnham, you moved to Kinet City now, but you've been very helpful, even when Trustee, uh, Chris Hodges was here, and now you be working with Trustee Jeffrey Hodges as well, and the people of this community, so you're gonna do appreciate it. And one of the items that's in here, my wife used to tell me, I keep buying the same thing over and over, and I didn't realize, and I was looking one day, and I said, why, I do have another one of these, so. I mean, it'd be nice, and so, uh, I present this to you, there are a couple of things in here, I think you'll find them beneficial and productive to you, so again, we thank you for your support.
And Trustee Garcia, I want to know, can you move back to Burnham? Okay, uh, is there any communications or memorials? We had, uh, let's see, someone passed away. Mrs. Mellowicki died, I think. What did she? Louise Mellowicki. Oh. Okay, Miss Mellowicki passed away from Chippewa. And also, Miss Lee passed away from Calhoun, and someone else passed away, and, uh, Miss Lawrence passed away. She lived in Burnham her whole life. Yeah. Okay. Louisiana. Miss Lee from Calhoun, one forty, one hundred forty third, Calhoun, one forty. So, could we have a moment of silence for those, please, for those people? Okay, thank you. So, we don't have any rest messages. We don't have any unfinished business. So, um, we're gonna go into executive session for a few minutes in the back. We'll be back in about ten minutes, so if you would just sit tight until we get back, and then we can break some bread and pray and shout together. Amen? Okay, so at this time, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
As a motion approved by go into executive session, we need to read this, all right? We need to read this, all right? I'm a request of closed session per, per our Illinois law, compliance statute one twenty, slash dash twenty one, discussion of minutes law for the close, whether the purpose is for approval of minutes or semi annual. I'm a review of minutes. So, again, for the purpose of executive session, if there's a litigation, uh, imminent litigation, uh, employees, disciplinary action, or termination of employees, that we cannot discuss in public, so we have to go into executive session to do that. And so, that's what we will do, and we will be back very shortly.
There is a.
Could we have a second, please?
Second.
Said so. That's who made the motion, Trustee Garcia. Trustee Garcia made the motion to go into executive session, could we have a second?
Trustee Richardson?
Trustee Richardson, okay.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
All right, motion passed, break session. We'll be back very short. Yes, I can make a motion to the board to adjourn. We need a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Hodges, you want to do the second?
I second.
I second, will the clerk take the role?
Who went on, who did Clayber? I think. Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Now, as a matter of record, thank you. The meeting is adjourned.
All right.